Good evening. I'd like to call this May 23rd, 2023 School Board Work Session to Order. Ms. Goodell, could you please take the roll?
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Here.
Dr. Dimick.
Here.
Ms. Downs.
Here.
Dr. Gould.
Here.
Dr. Ortiz.
Here.
Ms. Silverman.
Here.
And Ms. Tice.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Could you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its true republic, held for liberty's stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Chair, I move we adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Could I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Tice. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All those opposed say no? Thank you. Motion carries. We're at 2.01, and we're delighted today to have some students with us. Tonight, we have joining us Elijah Pelton and Rachel Grooms, and they're representing Meridian's Gun Violence Prevention Club. And, you know, this is especially timely as Gun Violence Prevention Month begins in June. And thank you, Ms. Tice, for our orange. Some of us have pins, and some are wearing orange. And it's also very poignant because tomorrow is actually the one-year anniversary of the horrible mass shooting at Robb Elementary in Uvalde, Texas. So your presentation and your presence this evening is very timely, and I will turn it over to you all. Let us know what's happening with the gun prevention club violence club at Meridian.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Good evening to the Honorable Members of the School Board and to the Superintendent. Thank you for allowing me to speak in front of your work session tonight. I'd like to start us off with a memory that myself and many other students will never forget. We have a lockdown, not a drill. This is so scary. These are words that were sent to me by a fellow student almost exactly one year ago on May 5th, 2022. They didn't teach us anything. They just told us to hide. This is unfortunately our reality. While I was not in school when this happened, I felt the worry coming through my phone. And I am thankful that the School Board, and I quote, "commits to adding gun safety items to our legislative priorities and will look for opportunities to further action on this critical issue." My name is Elijah Pelton, and I call myself a gun violence activist. Working with two other seniors who couldn't be here tonight, Hope Kleinberg and Erin Tarpgaard, we have formed the Meridian Gun Violence Prevention Club. Not to brag about our work, but we have successfully held multiple events, including two events with over 500 students present, and educators, staff, parents, and members of this School Board came out. We have successfully gotten attention from both national news sources and local news sources, and we've helped to serve as a basis for other school clubs like ours. I first got involved in gun violence prevention work in 2018, shortly after the Marjory Stoneman-Douglas massacre. Since then, I've worked with numerous organizations, including March For Our Lives, which was founded by Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School students, Students Demand Action, and most recently, Change The Ref, whose shirt I'm wearing tonight. I bring with me today a book. Written by my friends Manuel and Patricia Oliver, Joaquin Oliver's Parents. Joaquin, also known as Guac, was killed in the Parkland shooting. Manuel and Patricia wrote this book to send to lawmakers and other elected officials. They dumbed down their goals to be understood by our lawmakers, both here in Richmond and in the United States Capitol. I'm going to read the book. Joaquin's First School Shooting. "The end of the day was also my own. Let out on the floor and never got home. We heard a loud bang, then off went the alarm. My classmates freaked out, but I tried to keep calm. Out in the hall, a killer had a gun. He shot into a classroom, then came right for us. He came up the stairs, hunting for more. That's when we all panicked, and we ran for the door. We tried to get clear, but it was a bit late. It was his machine gun that decided our fates. Our country is numb to violence like this. Politicians don't care, because they still keep their seats. We must not forget, or I have died in vain. Enough is enough. Please, never again." Guac is forever. Joaquin Oliver was a caring, creative, and passionate young man who always brought a smile to people's faces. Joaquin was one of 17 killed by a mass shooter on Valentine's Day, 2018, at a high school in Parkland, Florida. Five years later, the regulations governing access to high-powered automatic weapons have not changed. Since Joaquin was killed in Parkland, Florida, more than 230,000 other people have been killed. This book, written by Manny and Patricia, is more than a book. It is a tool that activists and advocates like myself utilize. It is a feeling of hope for our future. It is a memory of Joaquin, whose memory lives with us not as a victim, but he is an activist. I got the opportunity to spend many afternoons on the Hill recently lobbying with Change The Ref. One of the key talking points that Manuel likes to use is that we're not here to stop yesterday's shooting. We're here to stop tomorrow's shooting. I would like to thank the School Board for calling on our state and national legislators to make our nation safer. I would also like to thank the School Board for their Safe Storage Resolutions, the City Council for their Firearms on City Property and Events Ordinance, and the School Board's work to have a support system in place in our district in the form of school resource officers, mental health support, school counselors, and psychologists. I continue to urge both the City Council and the School Board to call on Richmond and Washington to enact meaningful change. We are done with thoughts and prayers. As my mom likes to say, "Think globally, act locally." The School Board here truly does embody this statement with their work, and I'm honored to have spoken to you today. Thank you.
I would like to follow this with talking about what our club has done. I think we have had probably our most attended event, which was a walkout that we organized inside of our school. That was also a global and nationwide walkout, and we got a really large group of students to come and join us making posters at Lazy Mikes, where Elijah's family owns. And then to walk over around the school. And I think that this was a huge event that really made an impact on our school specifically, because a lot of people didn't know, "Oh, where are you guys? Why aren't you at school? What's happening? What's going on?" And it turned into an explanation from everybody texting each other, "Oh, I'm out at this walkout. This is like, I'm here because I want change in our school, and I believe that there should be change, and I believe that this is enough." And so when one student goes and tells their friends, "I'm out at this walkout. Go call your mom. Tell her that you can go out and get out of school and come and join me." That is what real change looks like, and that's how you make a group of students participate in change. And we have been very successful in our schools, and we have the ability to become much more successful in the future. I think that the biggest thing that we need to conquer is the participation from more students. And I think that a lot of students in our school are willing to participate and just don't know how. And this year, we have gotten a lot of students to help out and to participate in as many ways as they can. I think that what really got to me was when people asked, "Why a walkout? What will that really do for our school?" And I explained that my school is a place where I should come and I should feel safe in the classroom, and why should I be forced to go to school if I don't feel safe? I think that a learning environment is somewhere where I believe that a shooter is not going to walk in, and I'm not just going to get shot while I'm taking my math test, and that this is a relevant issue, this is a timely issue, and this is very meaningful for all of the students in our school. And I think that action needs to be taken very promptly, because this is something that's happening right now, and every single day that we wait and we don't take action is a day that we're all at risk of our school being shot up. Thank you.
Thank you both so much. You're, you know, I know I speak for my colleagues when I say that you're really our future, and we're just so proud of you all, you know? And I think, thank you, Elijah, for making those comments about some of the things that the School Board's done. Since I've been on this School Board, we've, you know, so this has been about three and a half years now. We've made quite a few, actually taken quite a few actions in this, on this subject. We, one of, one most importantly is we recently added, when people register their children for school, we add some, had some language there about, you know, locking up your guns and making sure that gun, and again, this is obviously different than, but, you know, we're doing what we can right now. And so part of that is making sure our gun owners are keeping those firearms locked safe, because not only can it hurt other children, it's a leading cause of teenage suicide is unlocked firearms in the house. We've also written, as you mentioned, resolutions. We've had our lobbyists lobby Richmond for safe gun storage laws and the like. So, you know, and one other piece that Dr. Noonan was very involved with was the building of the high school. And so we can't go into a lot of those things publicly, because, but there are a lot of safety, safety measures in that new high school. So, you know, to keep you all safe. And as we know, the lockdown that happened, that was a false lockdown, in a way, it was something good, because we saw quick response, and we learned from it. And Dr. Noonan has been one that met with the Chief of Police to go over that. So I think in a way, even though it was obviously a very traumatic day, it also showed us what was, what worked well, what we need to improve on. So, you know, those are some things, but, you know, at the heart of it, of course, is, you know, common sense gun laws. And, you know, not to get too political, but I know that my colleagues and I support you all and support what you stand for. So, Dr. Noonan, would it be okay if I asked if the board had any comments or questions of our students?
Of course.
Yes, Ms. Tice.
Hi, I just wanted to first just thank you. I think your words are so powerful, and I wanted to make sure you both know, and I hope you share with your colleagues in your club, just how impactful your work has been throughout our community. I have four kids in the schools. Two of them participated in the walkout. One did gun violence prevention for her exhibition project. And truly, as a result of the work that you all have done and your club has done, like, they've really made such a difference in the fact that it came from the students, and it was student-led, and it was student voices, just really empowered so many students younger than you who now look up to you and know that they can engage in the cause and that they can be a part of the solution. I just wanted to thank you on a personal level and make sure that you all know how impactful your work has been throughout the community, young and old. I mean, we've, we're trying to do what we can do as adults, and it really should not be on your shoulders, but the fact that you've engaged in this, this cause just means so much. So I want to thank you for your time tonight and for all the work you've done over the past many years.
Thank you for having us.
Ms. Silverman.
I just want to echo what Ms. Tice said, but add, I hope that your generation is more successful than we are. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. If, with that, if it would be okay with you all, if we could get a picture with you? Okay, let's have the School Board come to the front. Mr. Brett, would you mind?
Hey, Jed, will you, um, take your camera off for just a sec?
Okay, thanks. Otherwise, his head was in the middle of you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to help. I didn't know if you would already.
I have a school G post in this effort, which is going to make, but I will definitely reach out to the board.
Why don't we, what we can do is do like a little more, you know, is we're about this and then tie in.
Okay. Perfect. Love it. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on now to Section 2.02, Summer in the City, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Noonan.
Thank you, Chair Downs, and good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. Tonight is a special night, because we have some special guests tonight with us. I'm going to start with our, the people that are here in the room that are presenting, and I'll let them introduce the folks that are on Zoom tonight. But the presentation this evening is going to be done by Dr. Jennifer Santiago and Julie McCrina. And each year, we do what we call Summer in the City, essentially. So what's going on in the summer for our kids here in the City of Falls Church? And each year, we do, we do a lot, and so does the City of Falls Church with Parks and Rec. And we're not going to report necessarily on what they're doing, but tonight, we get an opportunity to hear a little bit about what's going on with our folks, and then even get to hear from some of our folks tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Santiago.
All right, thank you for having us here and to chat about what summer school programming will look like in the city schools this summer. So if you want to go to the, I don't know who's on the slides. Who's running? Okay, sorry. Yep. There we go. That's okay. Yeah, we had a lot of people to get on. So tonight, really, our purpose is to just share with you an introduction of the fine people that you can see on the screen in front of you, who are our summer school administrators of each of the schools. We'll introduce them in just a, just a second. We're going to give a pretty high-level overview of what summer school programming will look like at each school. Each of the administrators will share about what's happening at their schools particularly. And then at the end, we'll just review the kind of high-level logistics that are happening to support all of those programmings to happen. So one big thing to consider that's different than previous years in the summer is that we've typically run a four-week program that had a four-day program. So typically, we're running Monday through Thursday with Fridays off and missing the July 4th holiday. So this year, being that summer is a shorter summer for our teachers and students, we wanted to ensure that people still had a summer break, but also had the same amount of instructional time and support over the summer school period. So in order to do that, what we did was, as a collaborative group amongst all the schools, we decided to run the program three weeks, Monday through Friday. So it's the exact same amount of instructional time that our previous summer schools have run, just in a condensed time to give respect to the shorter summer for our staff and students. So the overall purpose of summer school is really to provide a space for students who do need some intervention and preparation to support them and being ready for their next year of learning. For some of these students, summers, having summer learning opportunities does fulfill needs inside their IUP, and then each, the schools will share information about that as well. At the high school level, we do provide opportunities for remediation, but also some extension credit opportunities as well.
So we are fortunate enough for our summer school admin that we have these opportunities for leadership positions, and there is an administrator at each building. And so I'm going to just share with you their names, and then they are actually on the screen and are going to be able to then speak specific to their schools. So at Jesse Thackeray Preschool, we have Katie Riordan. And there she is waving. And at Mount Daniel Elementary, we have Jed Jackson. He's there on the screen. And then at Oak Street Elementary, we have Michelle Goldberg. And at Mary Ellen Henderson, we have Andrea Chu. And thank you, Brittany Allen Shaw. She is here, too, to help us support at Mary Ellen Henderson. And at Meridian High School, we have Laura Schumer. Great. So we're going to go ahead and let Katie kick us off here with Jesse Thackeray.
Hi, good evening. Just as Dr. Santiago said, the Jesse Thackeray Preschool is going to run January 10th through the 28th, or sorry, not January, July, 10th to the 28th. And our students will attend from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. as well. They're not coming all day. The JTP Summer School will focus on students with IUPs, so students who need that extended school year for their instructional purposes, and as well as our BPI students, which is our Virginia Preschool Initiative. We're going to focus on early literacy, early numeracy, communications, and all of our developmentally appropriate things for our little ones, our threes and fours down at JTP. They'll also have access to their speech, OTPT, counseling, and whatever else is identified in their IUPs that they need during the summer. Thank you. We invited a total of 28 students, and as of last week, 24 have confirmed, which is wonderful. They will go through a schedule where they'll come in, have some snack or breakfast if they need it, have a morning social time for their social-emotional learning. They'll do some numeracy, some literacy. They'll have their recess, their lunch, and some sort of exploration or developmental centers that are appropriate for them and their learning, and then a close-out time before dismissal. So a super quick but packed day at JTP. Thank you.
Jed Jackson for Mount Daniel.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. I'm really excited to be returning to Mount Daniel this summer during the school year as a school counselor, but I really welcome this opportunity every summer. We are really excited, because as of today, we are fully staffed, and we will, our program will be running from nine to one each day. Something special, I think, each year is that we welcome the JTP students, who will be our rising kindergarten students. So it gives them an introduction to Mount Daniel in a smaller group, and they get acclimated to the building and to some of our routines before the school year starts. We'll also have rising first and rising second grade students. This year, we have about 65 students that will be hosting between our different settings. We'll be focusing on language arts and math instruction, and we'll also have some students that will be receiving ESY services that are indicated by their IUPs. Besides focusing on academics, we'll also be looking out for the students' social and emotional needs. We'll be providing them with time to play at recess. We're also lucky to have some of our enrichment teachers joining us this summer. We'll have weekly PE, music, and counseling lessons for the students to enjoy and to learn from. And as I said, we'll have recess and a snack break as well to make the day as well-rounded as possible. And we're really, really looking forward to hosting the students that we'll have this summer.
Michelle Goldberg at Oak Street Elementary.
Hi there, I'm Michelle. This is my first year in Falls Church City Public Schools, and so I figured why not, on top of being a new counselor, also be a new summer school administrator? And so I'm very excited to be here. The Oak Street program is very similar to the Mount Daniel program. Our program is running the same dates as Jed and Katie stated for JTP and Mount Daniel. Currently, we have 36 confirmed students, but we invited 68. And so this week and last week, our admin secretary has been calling families to find out if they're going to be able to join us. I have up here the qualifications for the Oak Street Summer School, and it's any students who qualified for intervention in the areas of math or language arts. And then the last bullet point talks about our daily plan. So we'll start every day with a morning meeting. That way, it gives kids an opportunity to connect with one another and to connect with their teacher. We'll then have 80 minutes of math instruction and 80 minutes of language arts instruction. And both those blocks of time will be structured as, like a rotation. And so they'll have a really short mini lesson with the teacher, and then they'll go into different small groups, one being with the classroom teacher using evidence-based practice. And then there'll also be like an evidence-based computer program that they're using. And then for math, there'll be math games that they're doing, and for language arts, independent reading. And then, of course, being a counselor, and also knowing how much the families at Oak Street and all of, I think, Falls Church City have really appreciated the social-emotional learning, we will have 30 minutes of that daily, and then they'll have lunch and outdoor recess. And then the next slide really just goes into a little more detail about what the ELA and math breakdown will be. So Amplify is what we'll be using for ELA, and for math, we'll be using Bridges, which are both programs that the school district supports. And then for SEL, we're going to be using a program called Playworks, which I have familiarity with, because I used to work in Seattle Public Schools. And so it really focuses on collaboration, cooperation, and team building. And then the last two bullet points just talk about how we're going to support our students with IUPs and their extended school year services. So I feel, like Jed, very fortunate, because we are fully staffed, both in gen ed teachers and special ed teachers and paras. So we will definitely be able to meet the needs of all of our students. And then our English language learners who are attending summer school, their services will be met, because it's going to be embedded throughout the day through language and literacy learning elements. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Mary Ellen Henderson will be Andrea Chu.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited about this new summer school program that we're going to be doing this summer. This is my, will be my third year as admin for summer school, with Ms. Allen Shaw's help, of course. So our dates will be July 10th through 28th as well, and our program's start time is from 8:30 to 12 for the students. Our focus this year is still going to be on math, grade-level math and reading standards, and how to infuse them into the real-world problem-based activities. History and science will be, content will be infused into the program to support all core content, academic areas as well. We sent out 70 invites in early May, and so far, we have about half of the responses back. And so we are looking forward to getting more responses in as well. We're also providing on, for one day, the Jump Start, Husky Jump Start Program, and that's going to be held Monday, August 9th. And the students will come to our school, and the sixth-grade teachers at Mary Ellen Henderson will host them from 9 a.m. to 2 p.m. And this program will target academic needs, their organizational lessons, communication skills, and their social-emotional needs, and of course, to prepare them for the upcoming school year. Okay. And we also, during the summer, we will provide our extended school year through the ABLE program, and this will allow students from grade six to 12 to attend. The ESY services are focused on their IUP goals, related services such as speech, OTPT, counseling, and it will be embedded in the summer school programming based on their IUP needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Laura Schumer from Meridian High School.
Hi, I'm Laura. Nice to meet you all. Our summer school program is unique in that it's all virtual, so the students will be working asynchronously, and those courses have actually already opened. They opened on May 1st, and it's asynchronous work from May 1st, and then we have the same in-person option available from July 10th to the 28th in the Meridian Library. So those three weeks are available if students choose to do that, and it's 8:30 to noon. We have three tracks, so it's the new credit, the credit recovery, and then the enrichment courses are also an option. And then our ESY program is similar to what was just shared about MEH. It's based on students' IUPs and needs within those IUPs, and it's also embedded within that program offering available in the timeframe at Meridian. And then this is just a list of some of the courses that we have available. So I'm not going to go through that whole list, but it's all there. So, yeah, and then I just talked about the extended year. So this is the Life Skills Program for students in grades six through 12, and it's academic and transition skills, and then it's just based on the IUP needs.
So thinking about the grand scale of summer school, we, on the division-level side, have been thinking about the logistics, and Kristin and Julia and myself have been helping to kind of project-manage summer school from the division perspective and thinking about all of the elements to make it run. So we've, we've most recently met yesterday with all of our operations directors and curriculum people as well to talk again about transportation, to ensure that we know what students need a bus, so that they'll have a bus, and how to most efficiently run that system and hire that system and ensure that system and ensure that students have access to getting to summer school appropriately. We're working with food services. And again, understanding the numbers at each building and then understanding how many of those students might need breakfast or lunch. We have a great system worked out with Richard and the school, the summer school administrators to share that information with him so that anybody needing food would receive food. Our custodial team will continue to be as amazing as they always are and keep the building safe and clean for everyone to continue with their learning. And we will continue to have the health clinic staffed with the school health aides and the public health nurse available at all times. So I don't know if Kristin had other logistics to add, but other than that, we are very much looking forward to a good, successful summer, supporting students transitioning into new buildings and being ready to start the new year on the right foot. Thanks.
So just a couple of things to add, to maybe not add, but just to sort of hone in on a little bit, I think, first, thanks to our school administrators for the summer. This is a group of people that are just outstanding and always do, for those of you that are coming back, have always done a great job. For those of you that are new, we have complete confidence in your abilities to get it done, even if you're brand new to Falls Church City, Michelle. We have great confidence in you. But one of the things that I think is interesting is that we are offering our Henderson summer programs at Meridian High School. And it's a great opportunity for our middle school kids to get to know the building a little bit more and the like. But the logistics this summer are particularly complicated, and I think it's probably good for you all to know this now, and that is that Mustang Alley, I think you all know this already, but Mustang Alley will be closed for the entire summer as part of the undergrounding work that needs to happen with the 10-acre site. So the logistical pieces of getting buses in and out, they'll all come in off Route 7 and leave off of Route 7 as well. The turnaround for that is down at the end by the new turf field. So buses will come in, they'll go all the way down, they'll come back out that way. But I wanted to just make sure that that logistical piece was on your radar because one of the things, it's always a challenge, whether it's the summer or the regular, regular school year, is if it's hard to get kids to school, we hear about it. So we wanted to put that, put a pin in that for you now.
And we have been in close contact with Wreckin Parks, right? They are a huge user of our school facilities in the summer, and they're our true partner. So as we've been working for planning of the closure of Mustang Alley, we've been in close communication with them. Mondays are always the hardest, right? Many families attend the Wreckin Park programs differently each week, so you have a different group of families. So they have assured us that they'll really help with that messaging and ensuring that everyone knows you need to both enter and exit from Route 7. In addition to all of the work going on in terms of the traffic, it's also a big summer project-wise. And we're finishing the HVAC replacement system at Mary Ellen Henderson. So you'll see cranes there that will be loading that onto the roof of the school. And then at the same time, they'll be working on installing the solar arrays on the roof of the high school. So there's a lot going on, such great things. But we know that it will take patience as we think of all the families coming in, both for summer school programs and Wreckin Park. There's always a lot of traffic. So we really appreciate everyone's partnership as we, you know, work through this exciting, busy summer.
So I think Dr. Santiago and Ms. McCrina would be happy to take any questions, or our site administrators, if you have any, about the summer programs.
Yes, Ms. Silverman.
I have two questions. The first is, do you anticipate going back to the four days a week after this summer? Or are you going to test this to see how it goes? Like, what are your thoughts there?
I think traditionally, the four-day-a-week has really worked well for families and for kids and for our staff. I think that's worked well. So I can't predict the future, but I would imagine, you know, knowing that next year's summer is a traditional-length summer, it'll be longer, I would imagine we'll go back to that four-day.
Yeah, no, it makes sense to be flexible for this coming summer. Another, I think, more important question, do we have a way of identifying JTP or Mount Daniel kids if they haven't gone to JTP yet or if they're entering Mount Daniel and didn't go to JTP, or students who are moving into the district at any grade level to see if they would qualify for summer school?
So my understanding with summer school is you have to be enrolled before the end of the school year in order to attend summer school. So that's typically, I think, the enrollment information that we've used in order to invite and have students enter into summer school.
Is there any, ever any thought to try to expand and try to identify students at an earlier, if they've registered, you know, and they're moving in, let's say, or they're going to be a Mount Daniel student but didn't go to JTP? If there's just a way to try to identify those students?
Yeah, well, yes, we could certainly consider it going forward. I think one of the things that we know for sure, the kids that are coming into JTP, for example, that need special education services have been identified through Childfind. So that is an early warning system, essentially, and we know who those kids are. And if they are starting in the three-year-old program or the four-year-old program, they may be bringing some of those students in anyway for different assessments and things like that. There's a lot of diagnostic work that happens in the summer that impacts kids also that are coming into the system. So we sometimes don't want to overwhelm them with both assessment testing and also with classes. But your point, your point is taken. I think it's an interesting idea for us to take a look at particularly incoming kindergarten ers and students that may have struggled coming in from, if they were at JTP, we know who they are, but if they're, if they didn't, you know, we certainly can look.
I actually recall this specific situation coming up about a year ago with a friend of mine who had an incoming kindergartner but had not been at JTP, but probably would have received services had they had the access to receive services. So, and, you know, and it can happen also at MEH or even Meridian or Oak Street, just, you know, if that family is registered for school here, you know, maybe it would be worth, you know, asking, do you think your student might, you know, need services over the summer? Obviously, we can't take everybody, but there maybe could be some sort of testing. I don't know.
We get records requests for students, too, that are coming into our system that are enrolling for the first time. And often, when we get those records requests, we can identify kids that way as well. But our business rule has been, you have to have been in Falls Church City Public Schools to attend our summer program, but we certainly can take a look at that.
I'd appreciate it if we could take a look at that and see if there's any flexibility in that.
Thank you, Ms. Silverman. Yes, Ms. Tice.
Thank you. I just have two quick follow-up questions. Just to confirm, when you say Mustang Alley is closed this summer, but that the parking lot will still be available, so we're not losing any parking?
We're not losing any parking, and in fact, we're super hopeful that we will gain back some more parking because they should finish the work of the future turnaround loop, and that will free up the top of that trapezoidal lot that's directly across from the school. So yes, parents will be able to enter from Route 7 and get into both that trapezoid-shaped lot next to the development as well as the parking in front of Henderson.
Great. So they can still park in front of Meridian and go into Meridian, they'll just have to go around? Will the front of Meridian be open, or will everyone funnel through Henderson?
Yes, you'll, no, we'll still be able to get to the front door of the high school. We'll want to ensure that they're walking safely, and we'll work to do the crane work to not impact arrival or dismissal. But yes, we'll keep everyone walking on the sidewalks. And just another reminder, we really like people when they're crossing from the parking lot to cross at the crosswalk and not just to cut across the road. As the road has been closed to traffic, many of us, myself included, have developed that habit. But that's one of the things we'll really work with students about using the crosswalk because when we come back to school in the fall, we're really hopeful, based on what the developer's telling us, that Mustang Alley will be fully open.
Not hopeful, we've been promised by the government.
We have been promised. I don't want to overpromise on their behalf, though.
Got it. Thank you. My second question, I don't know if it's for Ms. Shomar or for somebody else, I'm just curious about the projected enrollment for the, at the high school for the summer programs? It seems to me like every student I talk to does either summer PE or summer personal finance and economics. So I know the numbers must be high, I'm just curious if you have them yet. I know registration's not fully closed for all the classes.
Yeah, so the registration closes June 2nd, but once a course is full, that course does close. So like, the PE class is actually closed. The last I checked, it was around 500 total students, so, but I mean, we're getting registrations pretty much daily. So I can't tell you what it was last year because I didn't do it last year, but Brittany, do you have an idea of what it was last year?
I think it was a little bit less last year because we had less of the heart rate monitors, but they did get extras this year to be able to accommodate more students. So that's why you see that large number taking PE in the summer, so that they can free up their time for other electives during the school year.
And it wasn't 500 students just in PE class, that was the total for all the classes, just to clarify that.
And I do want to just address a question publicly that Ms. Tice asked of me earlier today, and that is that the PE enrollment isn't tied to the number of heart rate monitors we have, it's actually tied to the staffing that we have. And so the question, I think, came up, could we get more staffing for our PE? And I'd like, I'd like to say that we can review that in the next budget cycle to see if there's a possibility of adding some more staff to our summer program if needed. So I'll check this year, like, what's the waitlist? How many kids didn't get in that wanted to get in? And then if there are, if there is a large number, we can certainly look at adding some staffing potentially for next summer.
For next, so when you say next budget cycle, you mean for next year?
For next summer, yeah. I think we can dig in a little bit this year to see if there's some flexibility, but staffing, you know, gets to be kind of expensive.
Oh, expensive, and I'm sure it's hard. Teachers are tired and they want their summers off, so I'm always so amazed and grateful for all our staff who put in extra time over the summer, who, it's not their, not their standard contract, so thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, I guess my biggest concern is, is just the messaging, is that the messaging isn't, you know, first come, first served, and you have till June 2nd to register, and then you sign up, you go in on June 1st and everything's full. That's, that can be pretty discouraging. So either are finding a way to increase staffing or at least changing the, changing the messaging so families know ahead of time.
That's a good point. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. Yes, Ms. Trigul.
Yeah, kind of following along with kind of the budgetary concerns, I think what some people, I think, don't realize with summer school is that in a traditional academic, and I know you all know this, but in a traditional academic year, it's sometimes hard to catch up a student in October, November. And as a former teacher, I remember if I had a student lost in November, there was nothing I could do until summer. So I think the summer school program is critical in our current calendar to try to help provide those resources. So I really do appreciate, to Ms. Tyson, Dr. Noonan's point, I appreciate all the administrators and their time and their serving this summer. And it's very important. And the one thing I do want to ask is, how can we support this program? It is an important program for intervention, I think that's a great word for this. And I think, kind of building off of Ms. Tice's question, I think there are a number of people who take the high school courses for more advancement. And there's a significant number of students who are taking this for intervention, and those, in my mind, are different purposes. And I would like to make sure that we focus our, some of our budgetary questions on the intervention part as well. Do you have any suggestions or thoughts for the board as we, as Dr. Noonan's pointed out, as we enter into a budget cycle this fall, around that intervention needs, off the top of your head?
It's a great question. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I think, you know, as we've been, I mean, we start project managing summer school in November and December, so we're talking about summer school as soon as school starts because it takes that much time to plan for it. And really, for us, there haven't really been budgetary restrictions on how we run summer school. I think the way we've identified students and the way schools have set up programs to ensure that the interventions and the resources are available to students that are there, but also in a way that, like, kids don't feel penalized for being there. They do, it's learning, but there's still an embedment of fun and summerness to summer school, which is really nice. And we've been able to do that because we've had the budget to be inclusive of the, you know, extracurricular teachers being a part of summer school as well. You know, I think for us, the crunch is always like, will we have teachers apply for summer school? Because as you all know, you have kids in the division, like, people are tired and, you know, people look forward to summer. But we've always been really lucky that the people do apply, and then we're, as you heard from our administrators, we're pretty much fully staffed across the board. So we love your question, and we'll definitely think about it.
I actually want to just weigh in, if I can, too, a little bit here, because this is, this makes sound a little bit off, off the rails, or not off the rails, but maybe a little blasphemous to school divisions. I would love to not have summer school for intervention. And the reason that I'd love to not have summer school for intervention or any kind of remediation is because that meant that we were during the school year able to provide timely, tailored intervention that was by name and by need for each of the kids that are struggling. One of the things that I think Julie could talk about, N. Jen could talk about, is the incredible multi-tiered systems of support processes that we've put in place with people like, that are on this call, with our school counselors and Katie Riordan and the group that really have worked hard. Because what we've been able to do, that may be a little different from your experience in teaching, is have opportunities that are carved out during the day to do small group instruction with kids that are really struggling. So if I'm a classroom teacher in high school and I have five kids that are really struggling, I can identify those five kids and they can work with, you know, Jen at the high school who's our math specialist, to get some intervention in mathematics instruction during the school day, during Mustang block, or during a time that's carved out. So ultimately, you know, for me, when I think about resources, I love the summer opportunities for our kids. I'd really love to be able to pivot just to enrichment and extension and move away from intervention and remediation and maybe spend a little bit more money and time on some of those resources so that we can not have to do that during the summer, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that'd be, I don't think that's blasphemy, that's a great, great vision. So, yeah.
Dr. Dimick.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I just have maybe a few questions. First, what does the uptake look so far from your sense this year compared to past years? Are you seeing a similar number of people invited, sign on, or?
So that's a great question that I'll leave to our summer school administrators.
Actually, why don't we get back to you on that? I think that's a good question to get some data about, and then we can do some comparisons once the registration closes, if that's okay?
Sure, yeah, because sort of building on to Tate's question, and it could be we need extra help with outreach. And then my next two questions are more related to what's going on at the high school. I noticed that it's a May 1 start date for new credit, which seems earlier than previous years. Am I correct in this?
Yes, it is earlier, and the rationale behind that was, especially for the math courses, just to give students more of an opportunity to get ahead on that coursework. So that was the thinking behind it. And just offer more, more help if they need it.
Great, thank you. And I'm wondering if we're, my kid's not doing summer school, it's like, he's not doing summer school this summer, but he has the previous two summers. Are we messaging this well? And especially, are we messaging this to the rising ninth graders who want to do PE? And it is just, as someone who went through this without word of mouth, I would not have known that my band kid, to keep doing band and do something else, needed to do PE in summer. And so it was sort of a last-minute thing that if I had known, putting myself in the shoes of a parent now, does that parent of the rising eighth grader know that they should have already signed up? And in fact, their kid could already be starting this because at least the summer that I figured it out, we already had our summer plans by the time this was news to me. So there's that question. And then for the students who've now missed the deadline, can they just delay their PE by a year so that they could do their two electives and delay PE until next summer and the summer after if they're a rising ninth grader? So that they don't arrive in ninth grade expecting to do band or chorus and something else other than PE, but realize that they're stuck and they have to do PE just because they missed, you know, didn't register soon enough?
So the registration, I guess, for all the courses closes on the 2nd of June. So the registration, I guess for all the courses, closes on the 2nd of June. The publications that I'm aware of that have gone out have been through Schoology. And then we did a meeting for students who were interested during Mustang Block. We did two of them, one for the rising ninth graders and one for the Meridian students to attend. And then there has been messages on Schoology, and then I think it went out in like a parent notification. So that's in terms of the communication. But I hear you, and maybe that's something that we need to look out for next year. Just look at our communication with that. And gosh, I'm not sure about the other options for PE in terms of the schedule. So I'm not sure if I'm the correct person to be answering that. Well, I don't know that I'm the correct person to answer that either. But from the communication side, all eighth graders were invited. We shared information via our parent newsletter that goes out weekly, bi-weekly? And via Schoology as well. We did have an orientation for our eighth graders during our Husky Flex, which is the high school's Mustang Block. And then, you know, we talked about it in some of the classes. So the students were made aware and we shared the information with parents. And that orientation was also in person, so that it was no like digital misses going on. With regard to the PE, if you could, like, sit it out for a year? I'm not the right person to answer, so I'm not gonna like give my guess to it.
I'm gonna say yes. I'm gonna say yes, you can sit it out a year.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan.
And it'll be okay, because your freshman year, you're gonna have to take PE. And then in that first summer, between your freshman and sophomore year, you can take your second year of PE. So then you start your sophomore year with your completed PE requirements for high school. Then if you wanted to take something else in another summer, for example, if you wanted to take personal finance and economics, you can do that in the following summer. But we're also looking at multiple pathways where there's not as much summer work. So I think ultimately, the addition of a couple of pathways that we're putting in will really help alleviate some of that. But kids that did not get into the summer PE class this summer are not in trouble. They're gonna be on track to graduate with whatever diploma they want to get.
I think the question was, could they wait and take PE 9 after freshman year? The summer between 9 and 10 instead?
No, I don't believe that that's an option. I think they would need to take PE as a ninth grader.
Sorry to just jump in.
Face to face.
Is Virtual Virginia taking PE through the state an option instead? Because the state offers PE, doesn't it? So is that something that we could be messaging to families that didn't get into our summer program?
If it's on offer, I say likely, I don't know for sure. So we can find out.
I'm fairly certain it is, because I was hoping they offered driver's ed, but they don't.
I am too, but I just don't want to say it here on camera.
Right, okay. But is that something we can look into? And if it's available, we could message that to the families that have been turned away.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on Dr. Dimick's comments and Ms. Tice, I do think there is a bit of a communication gap with not only the PE, but also personal finance and economics. I know that I heard about it through the grapevine. And luckily, I had my son do it during the summer. And now he's coasting, whereas I've had friends who are now, their kids are panicking because they still haven't done their juniors and they still have to do personal finance and econ. So I do think maybe, and it could very well have gone out to parents, but I think maybe even just something in a morning announcements with a link just to catch parents' attention. Hey, parents of rising, you know, eighth grade, rising ninth grade, blah, 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 summer school is starting, you know, click here to get more information, sort of that way. Because I think sometimes, some of the things as a parent that go out sometimes are very dense. And I think we sort of like, looking at it at 10 o'clock at night, you know, so I'm thinking, you know, maybe it's sort of like flashing lights and morning announcements. It's just like, summer school's coming. Do you know what personal finance is? Do you know, you know, that kind of thing? And to Sue's point, or Dr. Dimick's point, also the PE piece of it. So I think, you know, it's a nice, you know, everyone wants to do summer school. I don't know, to your point, Dr. Noonan, I know you probably want, but it does help the high schoolers in terms of freeing up their schedule to do other things. So, oh, yeah.
I did call our assistant director of counseling, and she confirmed that it is not a grade level based course, the PEs. So you don't necessarily have to take it ninth grade. So if a student wanted to take it in the summer and they missed it this summer, they could still take it next year. So just to give some feedback on that question.
Okay, well, more to come on that. I do think, and also I think Dr. Dimick and Vice Trigold have mentioned this. And Dr. Noonan, you talked about, you know, really success is not having to have kids in remedial summer school to catch up. And so maybe that would be something that would be helpful when we do our data presentation in the fall. You know, just alongside when you have the SOE scores for the past couple of years, maybe looking at summer school registrations for the past couple of years and how those are tracking for remedial. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, Michael, Mr. Kasher.
Every year I've had to register for courses, and I've registered for courses with my counselor. So maybe if counselors like explain that like, hey, like, you can only take band if you register for PE online, that would be the best way to go about it. Because every year, students have to register for courses and they will understand that they have to do these things through their counselor.
Right.
I think that's a really great point. And our counselors do a really great job at advising students.
Right. But Mr. Kasher, don't underestimate the overbearing mother. Because I made my son do personal economics and econ and he's very thankful. But you're right, no, you're right. That is a good piece, is to really hear that information from the counselor. That's a great, great point. I'm just kidding. Any other thing? This has been so informative. Do any other questions from anyone? Okay, thank you, everyone. All of our summer school coordinators who are joining us this evening, thank you so much. Very, very helpful and informative. And thank you, Dr. Santiago, Ms. McCrina, this is really helpful. And it's just, it's a wonderful program. And we're really grateful to have this support network for our students. So thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna... Hope I just got that. Do you have, do you have school, do you, for Dr.? Okay, we're at 2.03, Falls Church Government Operations Energy Action Plan. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Noonan.
And I'm gonna turn it right over to Kristin Michael to introduce our guest tonight and talk about why he's here.
Thank you so much, Dr. Noonan. This evening, we have with us Andy Young. He has been just an outstanding partner from the general government in terms of our collaboration. And he has been working with staff throughout our operational departments. And he actually met with our entire academic and support leadership team on Monday to really talk about jointly, how can we, the schools and the general government together, work on achieving the goals set in this energy action plan? So we're super excited tonight to support him in this work that he's bringing to the school board in terms of sharing a little bit about how we got here and what our goals are moving forward. So thank you, Andy.
Great, thank you, Kristin, and thank you all for the opportunity to come talk tonight. Just want to give you an update on what we've been working on. And we're kind of midway through the process, but we'll pull up the slide. So the, no, you're good. So the city government has signed, has adopted some regional goals for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments has been tracking greenhouse gas emissions in the region since 2005. And several years ago, the city council, along with, you know, other jurisdictions in the region, have adopted a series of goals to reduce our emissions. 50% below the levels in 2005 by 2030 and 80% by 2050. And I don't know about you all, but, you know, does anybody know kind of how much greenhouse gases you've emitted so far today? You know, I don't really either. It's a complicated topic, right? And so to be able to really address it, we need a plan. So the city council's allocated some money to work on two plans. So we're kind of working these in parallel. So one is for the broader Falls Church community. So this is how can the government help our residents and businesses reduce their greenhouse gas emissions and, you know, reduce the impact of our overall community? What we're here to talk to you real quickly about tonight is the energy action plan focused on our government operations. So the emissions that we generate in our buildings and in our vehicles that we drive. And so kind of our intended outcomes is to establish a framework of what we want to accomplish, and then a list of strategies to accomplish those goals. And we're gonna try and get specific about what those look like. And we'll talk about a few of those here in a minute. But, you know, for each of those, you know, what'll be the impact on the emissions goal overall? So just real quick, some history. So we've been tracking the, as I mentioned, the emissions in the community since 2005. Made modest progress from 2005 through 2018 in reducing our emissions despite a 30% increase in the population here in the city of Falls Church. What you see within the data is that the emissions related to transportation increased while the emissions related to buildings decreased. And the buildings, you know, have gotten more efficient over that period of time. But the energy grid, the electricity we get from Dominion has also gotten cleaner. And that contributed to that as well. Saw a big drop in 2020. You all know what happened in 2020. It was kind of an odd year, but we saw a lot of reduced use in transportation and other things. Going forward, you know, if we don't do anything, you know, the projections are that our emissions will increase 15% by 2030, primarily driven because the city's gonna continue to grow. So where does the government operations fit into all this? It's a relatively small part of the overall total, roughly 3%. And so the pie chart on the left talks about kind of the breakdown of where all that comes from. So about 80% of the emissions for the government operations come from our buildings. When you think about the city and how, you know, relatively small size, we don't drive a lot of places with all of our vehicles. And so intuitively, I think it makes sense. Big chunk, you know, 61% is from our electricity use, 19% from natural gas. The chart on the right, you know, is kind of a breakdown of the emissions from our vehicle fleet. So the first blue, the tallest light blue bar there is for our light trucks. So if you think about across the city operations, this is most of the vehicles for the police department, public works, all of the support vehicles for the school system. The second bar is for our school buses. So we've got, I think, close to 140 vehicles across both the general government and school fleets. 24 of them are school buses, but you can see school buses generate a lot of emissions, right? You know, and then beyond that, it's like, you know, it's heavy duty trucks and some, we don't have very many passenger cars. And so that's why that, that bar's low. So. So to move forward, you know, we need to set a goal of where we want to accomplish. Part of the challenge on the government operations side is we don't have data going back to 2005. So we can't kind of anchor on the same data points that we're using for the community. And so this is a work in progress, which we're seeing here. But our intent is to set a high level goal based off of the data that we've got. So most recent data is from 2021 and 2022. And then set a series of other kind of more targeted goals around the specific areas that we can affect. So becoming more efficient with our buildings. So that we're talking about reducing our energy use intensity in our buildings. Adopting more renewable energy. Schools are a great leader on this with the project coming along for the high school this summer. And then setting a path for a sustainable fleet. So how do we get from kind of where we are today to a more efficient and sustainable fleet overall? What's next? So we've been doing a lot of conversations with a lot of folks, both on the government and the school side, to come up with, you know, some ideas and prioritization of things. And we've framed things out with eight strategies. And these are all at a high level at this point, but I'll talk through a couple of them real quick. So first, starting with implementing metrics and reporting. You know, you all have heard the old adage, you can't manage what you don't measure. And so back to my greenhouse gas emissions point earlier, how much energy we're using, you know, I think there's some opportunity for us to grow with this. So this will be the first, you know, in probably a two-pronged approach. One, kind of a more robust review internally with what we're using. And then an annual report that we would share with the public on our progress. The second one's related to buildings and energy efficiency. We've done a lot of good things on this across the city government over the last several years, the high school, of course. We've also made big investments in the city hall and the library. But we've got more work to do. And so the idea behind here, and we've had some good conversations with staff to identify opportunities in each of our buildings, which we'll kind of lay out and go after. Related to that is electrification of buildings. So, you know, it's really hard to get the greenhouse gas emissions out of burning natural gas. And so the way I like to talk about this one, have you all ever had the hot water heater go out in your house? Right? So I had this happen to me like last summer. And, you know, I'm a sustainable guy. I should be going to an electric, you know, some new fancy electric system. But when the hot water heater goes out in your house and your kids don't have a place to take a shower, you're just gonna get another, you know, you're just gonna replace what you have because it's a crisis, right? And so the thought behind this one is to kind of outline where all of our opportunities to convert equipment over and lay out a plan in advance so as these decisions come forward on investments we need to make that we'll be able to make the switch to electricity where it makes sense. The fourth one's renewable energy, you know. So after you've made your buildings as efficient as you can, you need to be using renewable energy for the rest of it. So again, the solar project at the high school is the leading example I think we've got in the city. We need to look at the rest of our buildings and see what opportunities are there. And then for, we don't have enough fresh space to generate all the electricity we need. So we're gonna need to look at buying renewable energy in other ways. And so that's some of the homework we're doing on the options to do that. You get into the market for renewable energy certificates and it's complex. And there's pros and cons to different things. So we're gonna try and map out some options for both the schools and the general government to pursue. On the fleet, similar to the buildings, you want to be as efficient as possible with what you've got. So gonna spend some time looking at, you know, fleet optimization. So we're gonna, on the general government side, we're instituting a motor pool that'll combine vehicles from different departments and share them. If y'all have been back behind city hall, some days, there's a lot of white city vehicles stacked out there. And so there's an opportunity for us to do some more collaboration and sharing. We've also had some good conversations about schools and the general government sharing vehicles, you know, buses and vans and different things when, you know, different groups need them. And then the part of this, I think, is also just laying out a more deliberate replacement cycle for our fleet across both the general government and schools. And having a multi-year plan that kind of maps out where you're gonna go is particularly important as we look to transition to electric vehicles because there's infrastructure that we need to plan out along with the vehicle purchases. So that's kind of what the bullet number six is, you know, zero emission vehicles. So I think as we've talked through this with different departments, it's mission first. So, you know, there are certain functions within the city that can go to electric vehicles tomorrow. And there are certain functions that are gonna take some time for a variety of reasons, I think. You know, real excited about the electric school buses we've got. You know, I think we'd like to kind of adopt some more. Can't necessarily convert all the fleet to electric school buses because you've still got to drive longer distances in certain applications. So there's a mission component of this that we need to think through. And there's also a cost element, right? You know, and how we fit that into kind of our long-term investment strategy. Education and training, so the two areas we've talked about in this are our staff. So when you look across, we have 10 major buildings in the city, five schools and five general government facilities. Every one of them has a different control system and, you know, HVAC setup. And so some of them are pretty sophisticated. And so you've got to kind of train your staff on how to operate those and ideally lay out a plan so we collapse some of these into a more common platform and make it easier to take care of. We also talked about training our occupants, right? So how does your building work? What can you expect about how it functions? What are things that you can do to make yourself more comfortable? And what are things that if you do them, might make things worse? There's some of the dynamics I think we have going on in a couple of our buildings today. some of the dynamics I think we have going on in a couple of our buildings today. So. Finally, collaboration and partnerships. So as kind of Kristin let off, we've had some really good, I think, discussions between the general government and the schools. They're going to continue to map out ways we can work together. Regional partnerships, you know, that I think we can learn from some of the bigger jurisdictions about how to do some of these things. And then finally, as we invest more time and energy focusing on this, how we roll that back into our student education, right? And, and, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of excitement, I think, with the sustainability programs at the high school and secondary campus. And so I think there's some ways with, with the efforts we're putting in here, we can contribute to that. So. So we've been moving pretty quickly. We've, you know, started kind of working with staff in March, a lot of meetings in April, working through a series of updates to everyone. The goal is to take our final report to city council in July. So, so here over the next month, you know, I spared you some more of the details, but for each of those strategies, we're trying to map out some specifics that'll go into that final report that'll be kind of a guide, set of guidelines and direction for us to make investments and, and adjust how we operate and things going forward. So with that, appreciate your time. I'll take any questions anybody has.
Thank you so much, Mr. Young. Any questions? Yes, Vice Trigold.
Good question. Appreciate you taking the time to brief us. On the community GHG emissions, you might have addressed this, but with the increase in development, it looks like the commercial building emissions has, is reducing over time. I would, I would imagine that it would increase with the development. What's the reason for the reduction in emissions?
So the, so the two, two contributors to that, that you're seeing the reduction are, one, you know, the buildings today are more, a lot more efficient than the buildings they're replacing. I think to your point, they're a lot bigger. The other big driver of this is that the electricity grid is getting cleaner. And so particularly comparing back to 2005, Dominion's pulled a lot of coal plants offline. So the electricity that we're using every day is cleaner than it used to be, you know. And that's going to continue to work in our favor going forward. We want, you know, the state of Virginia to continue to support, you know, that direction we're headed. But, but I think that that's the key contributor to why you're seeing that.
Thanks. I, well, I guess this is actually a question more for Dr. Noonan and Ms. Michael. There is the, the slide about looking towards trying to have more electric buses. And of course, that we would love that, but they're quite expensive. So I'd like, if you could all maybe educate the public what that means financially and what that means in terms of support from the city council and general government to fund those electric buses.
Go ahead. I asked that question of Andrew when we met the other day, too.
So electric buses are a substantial investment. When you think we can buy a diesel bus for just over $100,000, but an electric bus is four times that amount. So for every one electric bus, we could buy four diesel buses, right? We are hopeful that as more are purchased, right, and as they become more of the mainstream, that some of that price will go down. But they are a substantial investment. So hopefully as we work to develop this plan and we work on that, that fleet replacement plan, we can really work with the general government to try to identify funding that could help us in terms of those purchases. We've been fortunate in that we got two, our first two buses using funding from the Volkswagen settlement. And then Congressman Don Byer was able to get us our third bus that's still yet to come. And we'll continue to pursue grant opportunities as well. But many of the initiatives in this plan will require funding. And we're super hopeful that we'll continue to successfully work with our partners at the general government to hopefully receive funding locally as well.
And I would just add that our cadence for bus replacement has been about two buses a year. So if we can find ways to cobble funds together to replace two buses each year. So the one that's been identified from Congressman Byer will probably be one. And then we can find some funding potentially for another for this coming year, then we'll pick up the following year.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Dr. Ortiz.
Just, I don't want to go into too deep a dive on, on buses and electric drivetrains. But I understand it from the discussions that we had when we were acquiring the prior buses is that the lifecycle cost of those vehicles, taking into account maintenance and upkeep, ended up being pretty similar to that of a diesel bus, just because of the fact that there's essentially no maintenance associated with electric bus. Isn't that right?
Yes, we do have lower maintenance costs in terms of our electric buses, particularly compared to our diesel buses. And we also will not be paying any fuel. We'll have electricity that we're paying for. And as part of our analysis, as we work through this, we'll monitor what that electricity cost is. For us in the city, we drive a small amount of miles, right? So our fuel usage in the city is lower than when you look at some of the surrounding jurisdictions that have much longer bus routes. But we're definitely going to see savings in terms of maintenance.
Yes, Ms. Silverman.
So I think piggybacking off of those two questions, do we, I mean, if it's times four, how much of a gap is closed after year one or year two or year five? Do we have any estimation on that yet or no?
So the maintenance costs are going to be a very small portion of that, right? I'm trying to think of the most recent maintenance bill that I look at. Generally, the general government is doing maintenance for our buses for most of the routine things. So they're doing all of the inspections, if they're, you know, adding coolant, changing the oil, replacing tires, things of that nature. Depending on the number of buses that we have needing service or the severity of the repairs that we need, we also use external vendors. So we would send the bus back to the place we purchase it from for them to do maintenance. We really try to be really thoughtful about how many miles we're driving each bus. But one of the things that was alluded to in terms of our fleet optimization is, is buses for our bus drivers are kind of like your personal car. Everyone has the one that they like to drive, right, that is set up for them, that is clean the way they want it to be clean, right? So they often like to drive their bus. Well, the hazard of that is then depending on who is willing to do trips, particularly long athletic field trips, we end up with uneven mileage on our buses. And then we also have some uneven maintenance just because we have a couple buses that have required more maintenance than other buses. So when we talk about replacing buses, one of the things we'll look at is we don't just necessarily replace them on age. We look at their maintenance and some of the issues they're having. We try to be really thoughtful about where are we best replacing buses. And sometimes it's not the oldest. But our average maintenance on a bus each year is, is probably less than $5,000, right? So it will take us a while to save in maintenance. But buses generally do last. We really want to replace them every 12 years. But some surrounding school divisions are driving buses that are much older than that. We have been very fortunate in the city. Right now, our fleet is, is great in terms of we have been able to replace buses. So we don't have a really aging fleet. And our oldest buses were the two we turned in in terms of the Volkswagen grant.
So, and because they drive such short distances within the city, especially the electric buses, it will take a very long time to close this gap is kind of what you're alluding to.
Yes, I do think so. But based on the slides shown tonight, right, we do know that we have 24 diesel buses that are producing nearly as much greenhouse gas as 140 of our other combined vehicles. So even though it may not be the most cost-effective thing to replace them, it certainly has tremendous benefits when we think about the environment and our students and their health.
I'd jump in and just offer that some of this is also, you know, this is a plan over time, right? And so the, the economics of these right now, I told you, it doesn't make sense, right? Like, you're never going to make back $300,000 difference, right? Like, you could drive it for the next 50 years. I don't think you're gonna, gonna, gonna make that kind of money back, you know. But I don't think they're going to cost $400,000 a couple of years from now, right? And the federal government has programs out there to help, you know, provide resources for us to get these. I think we're on the waitlist for the latest grant, right? And so it's going to come back around, right? And I think so part of the plan is for us to stay on top of those kind of resource opportunities and kind of watch how this kind of progresses over time. And, you know, if we're trying to, we're laying out a plan through 2030, does it make sense to buy a $400,000 bus in 2023? I don't think it does. But that bus might be $200,000 in 2025. And then the economics, the lifecycle cost makes total sense and we should do it.
And I, just one final comment, if that's okay. I don't want to imply that this is a purely economic situation for me. I am looking at the environment and health situations, but I was just curious about the numbers. Thank you.
No, I think, Mr. Young, those were great points. I think that's a really common sense approach. And, you know, we, we all love the environment. We're supportive of the environment. But I think as a school board, we also have a fiduciary responsibility. So we're just, you know, asking the questions. And yeah. And so, thank you. I think that's really common sense approach shows, you know, as that cost comes down and looking for grants and that's, I just wondered if anyone's looking to not think it's so easy just to get electric school buses when it's not, right? Now they're very costly.
Yes. And I hope I in no way implied that, that you weren't environmentally conscious. I absolutely know you are. I, I think the other two pieces that are going to be really important to us is the distance that an electric bus can drive on a charge and the availability of chargers at the other school divisions that we compete with in athletics, right? So hopefully over time, as we get greater distances or the ability to charge our buses at that other site, you know, hopefully eventually we'll be taking electric buses to all of our athletic events and not needing to keep diesels.
Interesting. Any other questions for Mr. Young? Well, thank you so much for the presentation. And I, I appreciated the clarification because I saw the 2005. And I was like, why does it say 2005 on this and it says 2022? So that's just because we don't have data going back that far. Is that right?
Yeah. I mean, the government operations plan we're putting together is pretty granular as far as the, dug up all the utility bills and the fuel. And, and we just only have that going back a couple of years. I think we'll be in a better position to track that going forward. But, but that's what we're starting with.
Okay. Well, thank you for the explanation. Thank you for your time tonight. It was very informative. Thank you.
And thank you for your continued partnership. We really appreciate working with you.
Okay, we're going to move on now to 2.04 collective bargaining update and turn it right over to Ms. Minson.
Good evening. As you all know, the school board adopted a resolution providing for collective bargaining on March 28th. The Falls Church Education Association, FCCEA, sought certification as the exclusive bargaining representative for both the certified bargaining unit and the non-certified bargaining unit. We posted public notice of this election on May 8th. There were no intervenors in the election. So there were only two options on the ballot, either no exclusive bargaining representative or FCCEA as exclusive bargaining representative for the certified and non-certified staff units. The election was held over the past two days. It was an electronic election conducted by an online secret ballot through ballot point election services voting system. The election began yesterday at 6:00 AM, May 22nd, and to today, May 23rd at 5:00 PM. And this evening, we received the results of the election. For both the certified staff and the non-certified staff, the majority of the members voted. And of those who voted, the majority were in favor of representation by FCCEA. These are not the final results. There are a few more steps in the process under the collective bargaining resolution. Under the resolution, the labor relations neutral, Keith Greenberg issued his initial report certifying the results of the election. Thanks to Ms. Goodell for posting those on board docs just before the meeting started. The parties now have 10 days from today to file objections to the election with a neutral. The neutral will review the objections, if any, and issue a final certification of the results. After that final certification of the results is issued, the school board shall recognize the results, naming the exclusive bargaining representative of each of the bargaining units. And we do anticipate that if there are no objections, the school board would be able to recognize the election results at its regularly scheduled meeting in June.
Thank you, Ms. Minson. Any questions? So if I'm getting, I was just doing quick elementary math. So between the certified and non-certified, we had, I think if my math is right, 278 staff around that total between the two groups come out to vote. Around that.
Yes.
Okay. Which is just a little over half of our total employees came out to vote.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Minson, for that update. Okay. And we're going to now move on to, we're at 4.01. We're gonna move into, oops, sorry, no, I skipped ahead. We're at 3.01. We're going to move into a closed meeting. If I could have someone read us into closed, please. Yes, Vice Trigold.
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter personnel under section 2.2-3711A1, in particular to review the superintendent's evaluation and discuss the superintendent's contract.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Tyse. All those in favor say yes? Yes. All those opposed say no? Thank you. Motion carries. And we're not going to move into closed. So for those watching us, I think we'll bid you adieu. And because we'll be coming right out of a closed to quickly open and end the meeting. So this will be it for the, basically the public portion of the meeting. So thank you all for joining us this evening.